Please, turn on the mics. The Havant Grace Planning Commission meeting for October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four will now come to order. I will call the roll first. Edgar Romo.
Here.
Warren Hartenstein is absent. Farhat Shah.
I'm here.
Chip Place.
Here.
Janice Chan.
Here.
Tammy Schnegus is absent, and she told us she would not be able to be here tonight. Councilwoman Schnegus. Harry Miller.
Here.
And, Mr. Miller, you will be moving tonight into a voting position from the alternate to fill in for one of the two that are missing. We have a quorum. Okay, the first... I want to address the agenda first. The current agenda, the revised agenda that you just received. Some of you saw it yesterday, some of you, like myself, saw it for the first time this morning. And so I have to say that I, as your chair, I did not participate in the restructuring of this agenda. But I do want to make a modification to the agenda. Normally, we hear old business first, and then we go to new business. That's the way we've pretty much always done it. And I know that the first item on the agenda of new business is the site plan approval for the Decoy Museum. And I know how important that is, I know how long these folks have been struggling to get to this point, and have waited for some final decisions. So I would like to leave that as the first item on the agenda. But I would like the approval of the commission to take... If you look at that first page, if you take... to take items C and D, and we're going to move them to the end of the agenda. And we're going to... in other words, after we hear the Decoy Museum, we're going to then go to old business and take care of those things, and then come back to C and D. I hear a motion that we... that you approve doing that.
I still move.
All right, Chip, second?
Second.
All right, Janice? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, the first item on the agenda then tonight will be permit number two thousand and twenty-five zero zero five eight. The applicant is the Havant Grace Decoy Museum. It's for a site plan approval. We looked at this site plan some... quite some time ago. And I think... I'm sorry you all didn't get copies of this before tonight's meeting, all you got was yes... late yesterday. Some of you saw the greatly reduced eight-and-a-half-by-eleven copy that you... that was transmitted to you. And turn this around. I'm told that this is essentially the same as we saw last year. But I haven't had... this is the first time I've looked at it in this scale, so... Anyway, Tim, would you like to present to this, please?
Sure. So we have an expansion to the Decoy Museum. This was presented in some form last year, but with not nearly as much detail. Mr. Tarkini and the folks at the Decoy Museum, along with Bay State, have modified the size to make it more appropriate and fit the site, and to recognize environmental constraints with stormwater management and that sort of thing. So although it's the rear of the building that's being expanded, none of the details that you have this evening were provided a year ago. So the... I think the original expansion that was shown last year was over four thousand square feet. The... what is currently being shown is three thousand six hundred and eighteen-square-foot expansion. It's allowed in the zoning district. One thing I would just add is that because it's on city property, there's more flexibility in the code, because the city sort of... I don't want to say they enforce their own code. But from a legal standpoint, there's the ability to kind of work in some things, which I'll discuss later, that don't necessarily require variances and that sort of stuff. So one thing would be parking. So an expansion like this would require some kind of crazy off-street parking if it was somewhere else. But we spoke to city administration about this. It doesn't make sense for them to put additional parking on the site because it's in a critical area. That would cause some major stormwater and other issues, and they felt that there's ample parking in the area already for the museums and that sort of thing. So just keep in mind, as we're going through this, that there's some things that city administration was willing to be flexible on in order to make this work for the Decoy Museum. Considering adequate public facilities, there doesn't seem to be... there's not an issue with no additional impact water sewer, non-residential product projects, so nothing with schools. It is below two hundred and forty-nine total trips per day, so there's no traffic impact statement required. The architecture, we'd originally received some plans, and based on our code, we don't allow the... this kind of faux brick, this IFIS, in our code. So the original architectural plan showed siding. There was some concern that the addition to the building wouldn't match the existing building. So city administration felt that it was more important that everything sort of matched. So we did receive new architectural plans earlier this week or late last week that were added in that show the removal of siding and sort of a more consistent building or more material than... more consistent material with the existing building on the expansion. Administration is still working with the Decoy Museum to make sure that this has the right look for the area, since it's on city property. So we do have another meeting tentatively scheduled for the first week of November to continue to work through those things. From an environmental standpoint, there's no additional impervious space, or it's very, very small. There's a paved area in the back of the building where this will be... where the expansion will be going. So they're just really covering up already impervious surface, so there's no other issues there. Mr. Place did send out a message I saw earlier that had some questions about landscaping. According to the staff report, there's no issues with landscaping, but there is something, I guess, we should probably discuss later on this evening. So we're recommending approval on page four of the staff report that hopefully all of you received. There's some basic conditions in there. Otherwise, we're recommending approval, so I'm here for questions.
Commissioners, you have any questions? Our director?
Yeah, I would have liked to have seen a landscape plan, and I do think it's required. And especially the back-of-the-house nature of what's... this addition will provide, facing a very park-like setting. I think further landscape considerations would have been really important here. We've got a loading area out back, and I understand that the dumpster will be enclosed, but still, it's just a lot of back-of-the-house kind of activities in that park-like setting. And this is in the historic district, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah. And usually that requires brick or decorative masonry, glass panels, or other appropriate finish under the architectural standards.
Right, I mean, that's something I'll let Mr. Tarquini discuss at some point with the Decoy Museum. It's my understanding that there's just... it's a nonprofit organization, and there's limited funding.
Yeah.
So that was one of the things administration was willing to waive, as long as it matched the building. So I don't know how far he wants to go into financial details, but I know that is a big consideration, that there's limited funds for this project.
And I don't think we saw an elevation for the east side of the building, either, correct?
Yeah, I think it was just north and west I had also seen, too.
Okay.
Their architect is here tonight also, so they'll be able to discuss some of those things.
Okay.
Do we have any renderings, architectural renderings, available tonight?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and that's be part of your presentation?
He was just wondering if that would be part of your presentation.
Can we see a picture of what it's going to look like? That's what I'm trying to say.
Tim, are you done, and any more questions?
Yeah, there's no more questions for me, yeah.
If you want to wait and do that during the presentation, that's fine. You don't need to pull it out right this second.
I have a couple of questions. Are the outbuildings going to be still in place that I see on the pictures that were in the attachments? It looks like there's at least one outbuilding, possibly two. Are they still going to be still there?
They'll be removed.
They're going to be removed, okay, great, because they don't even match either, so...
One is actually getting relocated into the museum.
Oh, okay.
Mitchell.
Okay.
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 Okay, now, let me kind of do this in an orderly way here. Are we... any other questions for the director?
I just have one.
Yes.
So I know you guys, you said that they probably are some... It was when I was on hiatus, right? So I haven't seen it before, yesterday.
Okay.
Yesterday afternoon. Oh, I would ask... These things are very important.
I think your microphone's off.
Thought it was on, sorry. I do like to take the time and go over it, you know, not the night before, you know what I'm saying? So I would just ask that in the future, that, you know, we're given a little bit more time to look at these and...
No, I think that's fair. We had everything on Google Drive. I didn't know that the agenda wasn't sent out until I spoke to Eric. He was waiting on me, and I thought he had already did it. So it was just a mix-up back there to let you guys know that everything was available. That's my apologies.
Well, I did get an agenda, and I did go look at the stuff that was on the first agenda. I had all that done and was not aware of this until yesterday.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like, we had it... we had that information up there and available earlier in the week. There was just a miscommunication in the planning department, that's my fault. So I apologize for not making sure that the agenda was sent out to you guys earlier. I thought that was already done.
Google Drive itself is causing us a lot of problems, so I'll talk about that later. I'm not going to take time during this, and you and I maybe can get together and talk about that. But it's not doing us a whole lot of good. Okay? In the way it's being done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, now, we'll turn to the applicants and their representatives.
All right, well, thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, thank you for being here tonight. My name is Mitch Enzer, I'm with Bay State Land Services. We're located at two thousand and twelve Rock Spring Road in Forest Hill, Maryland, two one oh five oh. I am here with the architect from ADW, Mr. Paul Thompson, and Mr. Mike Tarquini on behalf of the Decoy Museum. I know this whole venture started with a presentation about a year ago, with additional detail being required. And we took Planning Commission and staff's comments to heart and dug deep into this, and hopefully provided the detail that we need to get an approval tonight. The Decoy Museum, for the record, is located at two fifteen Giles Street in Havant Grace, Maryland, of course. It is zoned RB. The property that the Marin or Marin City Council own is five-point-five-nine acres. The existing use is obviously a Decoy Museum, and the proposed purpose is to expand the Decoy Museum. It will be expanded to the north of the existing building. As the property is bound by the Chesapeake Bay and is within the critical area, there is a one-hundred-foot buffer from the Chesapeake Bay tidal waters. And expanding to the north was the most logical way to stay the furthest distance from the critical area buffer, and that's where this addition is located. In addition to respecting the one-hundred-foot Chesapeake Bay buffer, it also puts the addition over, as Mr. Boisier had mentioned, over existing impervious surfaces. And that limited to just a very slight amount of additional impervious surface added with the addition of this three thousand six hundred-square-foot addition. And that little strip of land is between a retaining wall and where the Madison Mitchell house is located. Being to the north of the property, the rooftop, from a stormwater management perspective, that rooftop will afford us to take the impervious surface from that roof and discharge that by means of gutters down to the regenerative stormwater management device that traverses across diagonally through the property. So we will be able to take this rooftop water and discharge it across the lawn, adding to the filtering of that water, and then into the regenerative stormwater management facility, further treating for water quality, the water that comes off of this roof site. From a critical area standpoint, we do lie within the intense developed area of the critical area. It requires a maximum impervious surface of fifteen percent. The site currently encumbers thirteen-point-three percent of the site with an impervious surface. And as I mentioned, that minor addition of impervious surface will take that thirteen-point-three percent to thirteen-point-seven percent, remaining well under the fifteen percent maximum requirement. We have received the staff report, and I did review the staff report with the Decoy Museum. There were four comments from the Department of Planning, and there were two comments from the Department of Public Works. And we do feel like we can agree to and conform to all of those requested requirements. As I said, we did have a pre-application meeting with city staff and went through the architectural plans that were developed at that time and the site plan. Went through all of the adequate public facilities issues to make sure we hit those very important items that the city raised during the initial meeting. And we feel like we've adequately covered those to the degree that we hope the Planning Commission could approve the plan. And if there's any questions on the site plan, I'd be willing to stay and answer those. And then I'd rather, if we could, hold off until the architectural items, because I wouldn't be able to answer those until we get done the site plan questions. So if there's any questions from Planning Commission or staff?
With regard to the site plan?
With regard to the site plan, yes, sir.
I have one, just lead off. You're taking out existing building A and B, those two buildings. And I assume you got credit, you're getting impervious credit for removing those buildings, is that right?
Yes.
And that it's built into your calculations?
Right, it's a cumulative total.
Sure.
For the building additions and the building removals, and then some of the accesses that it takes to get into the doorways. It's a balancing act, but the positioning on the north side of the building offered the least amount of increase of impervious surface to the site.
Yes, okay, any other question on site plan?
Yeah, I'll ask more of a site plan question. I saw Mr. Enzor just before I went out to look at the site, and Mr. Enzor was out there. And I have to tell you, it was very helpful to have the design professional out on the site there, which will relate to later discussion. But I just want to establish the elevation that we were looking at, where the stair will end, and the ramp... there's ramps that come up from the stair to either side. That will be at the same elevation that exists right now for the loading dock area, is that correct?
Yes, where we observe the dumpster location.
Right.
That elevation, we feel... now, we have an ass... That elevation, we feel, now, we haven't established full-blown grades and, and everything for the building. Our expectation is that ground level where the dump, where the dumpster enclosure will be, when we enclose that dumpster, is gonna stay, going to stay at that same elevation. And then we did, as, as we saw there, there are steps that rise up where that retaining wall was located. There will be another set of steps, but they'll be located a little bit further to the west where the current steps are, that will get up to about that same ground elevation where we were standing and, and up on the concrete pad.
And is that loading dock area the same basic elevation as the finished first floor inside?
The, the ground level.
Yes, okay. So, basically, everything in the back there, there will be basically a large well or depressed area behind the building?
On the, on the west side of that building, there will.
The north side and west side?
On the north side, we will be up at that current ground elevation. We don't expect to need to make a lot of changes to the ground elevation on the north and the east side of the building.
But where the, where the Clapper, the wood shake shingle house is now, that will be removed? And that area will be sunk to the present level?
As, as I mentioned, I haven't established all the site elevations yet, so... But our anticipation is we do not want to grade any more outside of that building than the current elevation today.
A section through, and just in general terms, sections through the building would be very helpful too, and through the site, to help understand some of these elevations. But your architect is eager to answer, to participate, so, you know, if, I can wait till he's, his part of the presentation.
And there are, I, I do believe some of the requests and recommendations that were made will lead us to preparing a site and grading plan for the addition that will further detail the spot elevations around the building.
Right.
How we will take the rooftop gutters down to grade level and get them into that regenerative stormwater management area. So, there, on the site plan that comes in for building permit with the actual building permit plans, there will be another level of detail, one, addressing the staff report, and two, addressing all the fine, finer elevations that we would need for the contractor to be able to begin his construction.
Okay. Yeah, that would have been good to see now, but, all right.
If we get an approval, we will diligently work on that plan.
I'd like to see it before we approve it. Okay.
Said if.
All right.
Any other questions of our site engineer? Thank you.
All right, thank you, and I'll, I'll remain if anything else comes up.
Who's next, Paul?
Yes.
Just need name and address.
So, Paul Thompson, I'm the president of Architectural Design Works. Mailing address is 22 West Allegheny Avenue, Towson, Maryland, 21204. So, if I may address that discussion that occurred regarding the well, if you will. So, the, the well will only be where it exists today. It will not be out towards the back of the addition nor to the, I'm gonna say, if you're looking at the rear, to the left side, towards the water, okay? So, those would all remain at the current grade. The only well that's occurring is where it is today. So, our addition goes out the back, so that well still exists and will deal with stormwater accordingly in an effort to drain that area that currently exists. So, with, with that said, I think this rendering could perhaps, I wanna stay miked. This, this gives you some sense of what we're envisioning in terms of matching the existing ephesus or stucco condition. We were requested to consider that as opposed to what is required as Clapper, if you will. So, we went back and revised our elevations. We've kept that band in an effort to break the building up visually vertically, as well as the screen is continued around the rear in an effort to screen HVAC, RTU products. The stair tower that we featured actually connects the floors and creates a visitor visual out to the bay in an effort to have some sort of, you know, sort of sightlines, if you will. The scissor condition that's shown there, it's actually on the lower level. It's in our elevations. What we're really planning on keeping the sides fairly similar to what exists, just expanding those areas. And the reason for that is museums want to control light, okay? We've been able to talk the museum into hiring Quattrofoil, who helped us with the Discovery Center down in Belkamp. And if you've not been there, I highly encourage you to go. It's a very interactive sort of experience for children. What we want to do is engage that next generation of the Decoy Museum. And we feel like, you know, decoys are fairly static, right? We want to create an IMAX theater. We want to create really interactive opportunities for the kids to explore making decoys and taking decoys home with them as a memento. And, and natural lighting creates some challenges for us in creating that experience. So, just, just try to be mindful of that. We, we did take heed and we've, we've added, we've added some, some windows on the back of the building. Those windows are faux. We, we would like to do LED light, backlit images of what's inside the museum to draw attention and excitement about coming in. So, and again, the logo for all to see from that, that whole back area, the promenade, if you will. So, that, that's sort of what we have conceptually. We're, we're open to thoughts. Again, we've got a tight budget to deal with and we've got a lot of fundraising to do ahead of time. This is generally where we're headed conceptually. We've got some really cool interior renderings that I think Mr. Tarkwini would love to share with you to get you excited about what we're trying to do inside and bring to Havertagh Grace. I, I think this is gonna be a really special project for the city. Happy to answer any questions, if I may?
Very impressive.
Thank you.
And, and as far as the inside, we would certainly be curious to see, but tonight, we're pretty tight for time, so...
Understood, understood.
Yeah, I would, but I personally would love to see them sometime.
So, so perhaps Mr. Tarkwini could send some to Mr. Bouchier and, and share with the commission?
Sure.
Okay, cool.
But the work you guys have done in that museum for the last, what, 30 years or so? Or longer, 40 years? Is, speaks for itself, you know, so I don't think we're the least bit worried about the interior.
But we are gonna make it dynamic.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any other questions? Anyone else like to speak to this? We good? Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. Is, is there anyone from the public that wants, that's here to address the commission regarding this case? Okay, hearing none. Any final questions or thoughts from commissioners?
Oh, I, I still do. So, it's, Mr. Thompson, can you help me out again then on what's happening on the north side of the building where the new addition comes out? So, the new addition extends all the way to where the existing loading dock area is, correct?
So, so the rear of the building extends out past the Madison Mitchell shed?
Right.
And that shed will be lifted up into our first floor and become a part of the exhibit on the first floor?
Okay.
Which is the reason we have a scissor lift to allow for items to be brought into the first floor so that the children can, can make decoys?
Right. So, the elevation, though, of the, the, the existing shed out back, it's much higher than the...
It's roughly three to four feet higher to the first floor.
It's, sorry, how many feet?
It's roughly three to four feet from that current grade up to the existing first floor.
It is?
Thereabouts.
Okay. So, there won't be a depressed area in the back of the building?
There will not.
There will not?
It, it will only be where it is currently on the, if you're looking at the back of the building, on the right side towards the residence that's adjacent.
Yeah, so that you can get down to the dumpster?
Correct.
So, that elevation will, will remain the same?
Correct.
But otherwise, the first floor extends almost to, almost existing grade out back there where the woodshed is and the tree is, is that correct?
So, so again, the Madison Mitchell building is sitting here. The first floor is roughly three to four feet above that.
Yeah.
Which is why we have the scissor lift to bring product into the first floor to be able to, to have exhibits.
Okay.
So, so the stair that I showed you on the back of the building will connect all those levels. Grade, grade as well as first floor and second floor, for egress purposes.
All right, and so the ramp is just to make up that three-foot difference then?
So...
The ramps out back?
The ramps out back?
Yeah.
I, I can, as, as I stated before, our goal is not to grade and change that grade other than providing positive drainage away from the building. So, when we establish that ground floor level at the time when we do the actual site plan and set those elevations, we believe it's somewhere around three and a half to four feet from where the existing grade is today, minus some sort of change in, in order to ensure we have positive drainage away from the structure as a, as a 2% slope away. And then up to that finished floor level, we expect to be, be around three and a half to four feet.
Okay, and so you're relocating HVAC equipment to the north side of the building that would be pretty much at existing grade then?
So, so actually, that's still in flux. Our mechanical electrical engineer has been held off until we had a site plan entitlement, just because it's, it's expensive. But right now, we're envisioning taking a lot of those on grade units and putting them up on the, on the roof to be screened.
Okay, but you do have a loading bay in the back too?
There, there's, there's a, I don't know what you're referring to as a loading bay.
Well, there's a, there's a steel door with a scissor lift and...
So, so that's for us to get supplies, wood supplies, up into the first floor?
Okay.
So, we're not dragging those through the entire museum?
Right.
There's actually an interactive display near the Mitchell shop in the back of that building where the scissor lift is. And that's where the kids will be kind of creating their own decoys and taking them home for memorabilia.
Okay. All right, that was just really to try to understand the scheme a little better.
Understood. So, so we do have some storage at that lower level under the first floor for, for the museum. You might have seen some of that on the elevations earlier.
Okay. All right, I guess my, my concerns are the same. I don't think you were here for the last round.
I wasn't.
They're, they remain the same, really. I think this is a huge lost opportunity, both for the museum, and I understand budget limitations and all, but both for the museum and for the community and the surrounding park here. I don't get any sense that the museum building has any relationship to the park whatsoever. And it really, it, it turns its back to the park. And I would have hoped for, and I understand the faux windows and maybe some LEDs, but you have this building, this, the old building, the Clapper building that you're putting inside the building. And it would have seemed maybe there was an opportunity there to put in some real windows and illuminate at night and so people could see into the museum. I wouldn't imagine that that building is particularly light-sensitive. But, you know, you, there were things that could have been... I don't know if you were thinking of a cafe or something in your program. And in the floor, you have workspaces on the north and west side. Those could have, I, it seemed like those could at least have windows or could present themselves to the park a little better. Or if you were thinking of a cafe, how great it would be to overlook the parking deck or something. And then, you know, and just in terms of, just the whole, all, the facades are, you know... I understand the original building was very utilitarian. I don't think there's a necessity to repeat that with an addition. It's those, once, it's not a particularly attractive building right now. And just extending that, that motif is not, not gonna be helpful. And I think it'll really look like a huge imposition in that space. And as you look at it from the corner of Lafayette and, is it Market Street, looking down, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna stick out, I hate to say it like a sore thumb. So, I would have hoped there would have been more, more to do with the building to engage the park and, and be sensitive to that park location, to tell you the truth. And that's why I would, you know, emphasize if, if there was limitations on budget or materials or you could think of different materials, but I think landscaping could be important. One thing I noticed going out there tonight was that the rain garden through there is actually growing up kind of nicely. And the, you know, extending of, for regenerative, regenerative forest from that location to surround the building a little bit more could be something to consider. You know, green and, I noticed that you have, there's a vine growing up the side of the wall. Just making a green wall out of it would be, would help. I think, I think there's things that could be, could have been done here more than, than we're, we're seeing tonight. So, again, I think it's an opportunity lost.
Since...
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So, my questions are simple. I just need answers and clarification and I don't know who to answer this. Maybe you would answer this, Tim. Who owns that property?
City of Havertagh Grace.
So, if the city owns the property, are they responsible for the, the landscaping? Aren't they?
I mean, I would need to look at the lease agreement between the city and the Decoy Museum. I mean, ultimately, yes, but if, if there's some arrangement in the lease, then they would give that responsibility to somebody else based on that. But I, I'm not familiar with the, the lease requirements.
So, if the Decoy Museum decides to not exist anymore, that property comes back to the city?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yes, the, the city leases the property now to the Decoy Museum. So, it's city property, it's just leased.
Okay. So, my second question is to you, would you consider if they were to make this building a more natural color other than the beige, mobile home beige color that it is? Would you be happy with that versus having to change anything else?
I, I would be happy with almost anything. But I, I think, yeah, there's various, various strategies that could be, you know, again, it mentions brick. I don't know if that's necessarily the answer. I would have liked to have seen, I would have liked to have seen the whole building be different, to tell you the truth.
I know I worked with nonprofits before, nonprofits don't have any money.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And I, I know they're on an extremely limited budget.
I know, I understand.
So, I'm trying to think of the least expensive change that would be, like, considering, make it a little bit more... What's the word I'm looking for? Make it look more pleasing to the eye. Anything could make that, even if, like you said, a vine growing up the side. If you were to do something like have some kind of planting along the sides that would make that less in-your-face beige, standing in a green, you know, park setting. I think that, that's my opinion and that's just the only thing that I'm gonna put forth is I like aesthetics and in the park area, I think aesthetics are kind of a big deal.
I, my opinion is that those earth tones are more natural than, you know, they, and I don't see beige. I see earth tone right there, which is, tends to fit in in natural settings better than... Better than bright colors and things like that. The other comment that I would make is that this entire park is a city park. It's a city property and I would think that as, as this park area matures over the years and develops further, if there's anything else to be added in there, somewhere along the line, I would think the city would, would be embarking on a, an entirely new landscaping program and, and...
Possible.
I, I just don't see landscaping as the responsibility of the museum.
Yeah.
I, I really don't. I think it's, the museum has just been given the right to occupy a square foot... a square footage of space in that park. But the, but the landscaping, to me, is the purview of the city of Haverty Grace and whatever it wants to do in the future in a comprehensive way. And some of that might be to do some screening of the back of the museum. But I think that the landscaping needs to be looked at, again, from an overall and comprehensive standpoint, rather than just trying to do things to, to put lipstick on the museum.
Yeah.
That's just my opinion, yes.
And, and as I see it, the, the back or the, the rest of this open space behind to the north of the building is, it looks like it's not meant to be such an active park anyway. And we have made a great investment in the, the stormwater management thing that really should not get much activity and should be fairly protected from either people traffic or any of that. I, I think that is actually more important than the appearance. And, and it's gonna be fairly wild as it, I think it was intended to be. So it would be more of a natural filter for stormwater to, you know, get to the bay.
Definitely is more important.
Right.
It, it used to be a muddy parking lot for cars that parked on grass.
Right. So I, I think, you know, kind of leaving it alone and, you know, if you wanted to enhance it from a environmental standpoint by making it wilder and more of a filter and that kind of thing, I, I would encourage that rather than encouraging either people to be back there or it to be, you know, used by humanity. That would be my opinion.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would, I would just, I'd echo your, that's why I mentioned maybe a forest regen. I would build on the, the storm management parquet that's out there right now and expand that around the building and.
I think forestation in there would be.
Yeah, reforestation and.
And that could be done later at, at another point.
And I understand we have the limited jurisdiction over some of these things. I do think landscaping is part of the jurisdiction, but I would encourage the city, though, as the landlord here, to, to exercise its own discretion over this matter, because it could definitely be improved. Did you look at even murals or anything like that, you know, along the building? There's so many other things that could happen here.
To answer that, we, we did explore that in conversation. Again, this is an early concept. We're open to thoughts. But we, we need to sort of get over this hurdle first to continue down that road. And happy to keep you updated on, you know, what we think we can achieve.
Okay, see anything else?
I, I just had a quick comment.
Yes.
It's not a question. So it, it looks like the look and feel, you're, you're trying to avoid, abide by what you can within the resources. You know, what, what the site, the site plan approved by the city and, and all the, all the possible rules and regulations, right? The extensions are abiding by.
Correct.
Under the circumstances and under the funding with all the, with all the improvements that you're doing.
So as was said earlier, we did originally show it with a clapboard exterior facade.
Correct.
And we were asked to match what was there, so we changed all the design and resubmitted.
Yeah, that, that's what it's looked like to me. So, so things like, you know, what, I mean, others are mentioning, they're more like enhancements, right? The, the, what is that Ed mentioned?
So certainly the request to try to add windows.
Windows and.
The stair was something that we needed to meet life safety, egress codes, right?
Exactly.
So we added that and thought that could be a feature with a outdoor platform overlooking the bay that would enhance the museum and the experience that our, you know, customers, attendees would, would, would have at the museum, so.
Yeah, so, so my final comment was, within, again, within the circumstances, abiding by what the city is telling you, I, I personally don't have an issue with anything.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I would, nobody else has anything to say, okay? I would like to entertain a motion regarding this site plan application. And if you, if someone moves for approval, please be sure to include the recommendations and suggested conditions, the four from the Department of Planning and the two from the Department of Public Works in your motion. Do I hear a motion?
So can I, can I put in a motion with what you just said? I mean, I don't remember the conditions.
The chair understands that you moved to approve the site plan.
Correct, yes. Based on the conditions that.
To include the conditions, the four conditions of the Department of Planning and the two conditions of the Department of Public Works.
Absolutely.
And that is your motion?
Yes.
Okay, we just have to get the legalese straight. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question all in. I'm gonna call a roll. I'm sorry, let me get my roll call here. Mr. Girona?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
And Mr. Place?
I'm gonna regretfully vote no on this, based on the technical deficiencies that I saw in the application and would have hoped to have seen a more developed plan after consultation with the city.
Ms. Chan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, and so the motion carries. The site plan is approved by the Planning Commission. And as you go forward, best of luck. It's, it's a beautiful new addition. Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna move to old business. If I can find my agenda. What did I do with it? I've got one laying here somewhere. Here it is. The first item of old business is a comprehensive plan update by Diane Clare. And I might tell you that at this time, what we're seeking is to accept the comprehensive plan in its final written form by the department and to recommend that it be, that, that it be sent up to City Council for its approval, having our approval. And so tonight, we're basically gonna, after she makes her presentation, we're gonna ask for a vote to approve the entire comprehensive plan as it's written. So Ms. Clare?
Good evening. I don't have a real presentation, per se. I just wanted to come before you. My last meeting with you was in August. Ended up providing all of the chapters to date, all the, all the changes that have been incorporated from the comments that we've received during the 60-day review and comments that you have sent and public comments, for instance. And I just wanted to make sure we have the opportunity to review all of the chapters on Google Drive, the ones that were added to. Any comments that existed or any changes to the plan were highlighted in yellow so that you didn't have to read all the text again. You could see the changes that were made. And just wanted to stand before you and see if you're okay, if everybody's gotten a chance to review it. And two areas that I've, I just wanted to let you know, I made some minor amendments too that have been incorporated. They're very, very minor. In the Historic and Cultural Resources Chapter, I updated language in there to reflect that we have achieved our certified local government designation on page 1013 and added three, three bullet points to the, the action items based on Jacob Benson with Hartford County. He's a historic preservation planner. Some things that I, I failed to see in the comments that I received from Hartford County Government. You'll see those changes as well. They're very minor. If you want me to read them into the record, I can do that tonight. One is recognize the importance of researching and designating structures for inclusion in the National Register of Historic Places, such as a recent listing of the Hirsch residence designed by Paul D. Hirsch, which was researched by Baltimore Architecture Foundation Incorporated in recognition of women in architecture. It is important to elevate documentation that is reflective of various eras, styles, and design talent. That's on page 1013. Two other bullet points, other, these are in addition to everything else that's highlighted throughout the whole document. Develop historic plaques to identify and celebrate properties protected now as Haverty Grace landmarks and/or districts. And third is reinstitute the use of historic markers to identify buildings of significant historic value. This may be an opportunity for partnership with a historic preservation advocacy organization, such as the Historic Haverty Grace Foundation. And the only other minor piece is I want to add to the active transportation map. This is a new map. You will see that in the, in the chapters. Active transportation has to do with all the pathways, trails, bikeways, and shared use paths that are planned or existing. And I just want to add to that map. It was a, a big oversight not to have the East Coast Greenway, 9/11 National Memorial Trail, and the Baltimore Metropolitan Council Aberdeen to Haverty Grace Planned Shared Pathway. So those things are just going to be added. Other than that, the document is, as it's been provided to you on Google, Google Drive, and hopefully you've been able to see all those section changes. So otherwise, other than those minor things tonight, to me, it's good to go. I hope you feel the same way. I want to thank you for all your time and effort on this project. It's been an amazing couple of years. I want to thank Tim Boursier, Eric Lawrence, and Mari Thaxton for all their hard work to bring this envisioned Haverty Grace plan to fruition. I couldn't have done it without their support. The idea is to ideally have you formally adopt it. It would go to council based on your recommendation. All of the narrative and maps and content would be what the council will be acting on. And from there, it would go to a final format through Ann Fulham to provide the graphic portions to be a flipbook online in full color for ease of access. It's 300-plus pages. We wanted to make it highly visual. And the only way we could afford to do that is to have it online as a flipbook and to be available to the public. So with that, I hope I'm done.
Well, before you sit down.
Not done, not done, done, but go ahead.
Speaking on behalf of the commission, I can't say enough about how, how professional that product is. And it's unlike anything we've ever seen in our past history of comp plans. It, it blows away every comp plan that, that we've ever had in the past.
I wouldn't say that. We've had good ones, yeah. I said, I was gonna say, we've had some, we've had really good ones along the way. We're just building on the foundation.
We have things today that we didn't have back in those days. But it's still, I commend the city for taking this plan in-house and not just flipping it over to a consultant. I think that was a smart thing to do, and I think the product speaks for that. I really do. It's, it's, it's our product through and through, from beginning to end. And that's, that means our, meaning the city, you know. It's strictly, strictly us. And I know some communities just kind of shuck it off and they just go hire a consultant or something to knock out a plan for them, and, and that's not the way we play the game, so it's.
Well, it's been pretty amazing. Just to sort of reach back a little bit, the, the story maps went live September 1st in 2022. And then I believe we started tackling it in conversation in November of 2022 and trying to produce, on average, a chapter a month in general and try to keep it going as far as the presentations that we provided to do, to you. It was a long run. It was providing each chapter in advance, all the YouTube videos, all the presentations, and, you know, having it kind of unfold. So it was, it was a long slog, but it was very cool and so, anyway.
Commissioners, anybody have a, a comment on it?
Good job.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Yes, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. It's a tremendous job by Diane, the department. It's really great.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm proud of it. I'm proud of the plan.
Good, good.
I take great pride in being a part of that, you know, a small part compared to your part. And some of the other commissioners here actually really got into it even deeper than I did, and that's wonderful. So I would like to hear a motion that we accept, approve and accept the comprehensive plan as prepared in its final state and that we transmit it over to the City Council with our recommendation for its approval. Here's such a motion.
I'll so move.
Second?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? And by the way, I'll be writing a formal letter to City Council to go with it, you know, telling them that we've approved it. So I'm gonna call for a, a vote on this one, and we'll start at the bottom. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chan?
Yes.
Mr. Place?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
I, I'm a yes. I have some concerns, but I'm a yes for now.
I'm sorry?
I have some concerns.
Okay, do you wanna vote aye?
No, I, 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 I still don't understand how the process was carried out. We provided some input, how it was implemented, you know, where it went. Remember, you and I talked. There, there were no specifics. I wasn't able to find what happened to, you know, some of the input. But overall, let's say yes. I, I just have concerns of how it was carried out. But if the majority think it's good to go, then, then I'm fine with it.
So your vote is aye?
Yes.
And your concerns are, are well taken. Mr. Girona?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you so much again.
You're welcome.
All righty.
I'll be taking all of the highlighted information out of, you know, scrubbing those highlights for a clean copy to go forward now to the City Council. And we'll be figuring out whether it goes by, by, chapter by chapter digitally, the way it's been carried forward through our website, or whether they want us to receive paper copies. So anyway, we'll figure that out.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, and the next item on the agenda is approval of the Planning Commission's written report and recommendations on the RO zoning district. Is the letter to be sent to mayor and city council. And I drafted that letter, and, see what I did with it here. Here it is, right here. And I transmitted the draft that I prepared to each of you several days ago. And you have, I also brought you copies of the draft. And I would ask, do you have any? First of all, do you, do you have any recommendations to modify anything that's said in that letter? Or are you okay with the way it's written?
Well, Mr. Chairman, you know, I sent you some, some notes that I had sent on to the planning director yesterday. You got those, did you?
No. Oh, you mean, I'm trying to remember which, you, you sent it to me also?
Yes, I sent it to you.
Yeah, I think I did, yeah.
Okay. You want me to, I, I think they are, they somewhat parallel what you drafted. Would you like me to go through my notes? Okay. Um, you want me to, I, I think they are, they somewhat parallel what you drafted. Would you like me to go through my notes?
Sure. I mean, I guess what I'm saying, if you wanna do it that way, or do you want to, are you proposing a modification to this letter? Or is there something I missed, or is something I should add, or something that's stated too strongly, or?
You know, um, may, maybe I can go through the, just go through my notes and, uh.
Okay.
All right. Let me, uh, let me send these around, too. Tim, you've had the, you got the.
Yeah, I'll take a copy though, anyway.
Yeah. I don't know if he's seen the draft of the letter yet. Have you seen the draft? Okay. Let me get you a copy of the draft.
Yeah, I, um. Chip, just real, real quick, before you start, just to let everybody know, there is a public workshop scheduled for November fourteenth to discuss this. And it'll be a little different than a normal mayor and council public workshop, where I think they're gonna take public comment. So I just wanna make all of you aware of that as we're going through this, this, that the next step by mayor and council won't be consideration of the ordinance on its face. That'll be a presentation by the consultant that all the information that you're stating tonight will be made public, and there'll be more opportunity for public comment prior to this being taken to the mayor and council.
Okay, well, I, I think I'd like to. Anyway, I'll, I'll, before this meeting's over, I'll give you a copy of what, of this draft. Now, when, when, when I get their approval and send out the letter in its, in its actually approved form, um, I'm gonna copy the department on that letter, of course.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Yeah. Okay, let's see. Now, you wanna walk us through this?
Sure. Mine, Mike.
Copy of Chip's notes?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Pass, yeah, pass them on there.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'll, I'll walk you through it. Um, my comments, in a way, parallel yours, Mr. Chairman. They're a little bit more technical. In that I agree, one, uh, the, uh, the main situation we face is the hospital site, and how we should handle that in terms of zoning going forward. And I found, I thought that the, the, the vision plan and, uh, the, then the subsequent form-based zoning were somewhat disconnected and never really got to the point. The vision plan had a lot of public comment, a lot of public participation. It provided, uh, you know, a number of alternatives. It eventually came around to somewhat of a, a picture of what this site could look like. All of which was fine, but it, it kind of missed some very basic things. And like, just showing us what the site could look like under the current RO zoning. And the maximum zoning, the maximum density there, uh, for residential purposes, would consist of townhouses. And I don't think anybody in any comments found that, uh, public comments found that that was a desirable use. A lot of people talked about single-family housing, but that's certainly not really practical on a site, especially where you have huge demolition costs, and, and we have other needs in town, too, regarding housing. So a first step would have been, just show us what the site looks like under existing zoning. And understanding that that's probably not the ideal result, uh, even given the, the potential density that would result from that, show us what that would look like under a form-based zoning. Do a real urban design solution for the site, under what this could look like under a form-based zoning solution. And then that should have translated into the specific form-based criteria that would get, give you that picture of what the, uh, what you would look for under a form-based zoning. So it would be things like restoring Lodge Lane, uh, setbacks consistent with Union Avenue, public and semi-public open spaces, parking lanes behind homes like they occur right now. What's the street landscape look like? Um, and many of the amenities that were shown in the vision plan should be, as density bonuses, should be part of the base plan, I think, you know, like quality streetscapes. Show flexible ba, use, space for additional uses, like a health clinic, or boutique hotel, or restaurants. And then, you know, show, show us how those things would work under a more ideal plan that would fit within the context of Harvard Grace. And establishing that baseline is also very important, because we also face, uh, House Bill five thirty-eight, uh, which allows for density bonuses on state-owned land. And so we need to very clearly establish what that, a baseline, if, should HB five thirty-eight come into play. And then beyond a base, uh, plan and form-based zoning, if we are going to permit, or if HB five thirty-eight comes into play, or if we're gonna allow on our own initiative, and I don't think it would be a bad thing, to allow, uh, senior housing, or even an affordable housing component, given that our own comprehensive plan shows that forty percent of the renters in the town are, uh, price burdened. Show us what, what, spell out what the criteria is for allowing additional density on the site. So to me, that was the basic, that was the basic task before, that we should have been pursuing here. And somehow, we never quite got there. So, and then applying the, the, the form-based zoning to the rest of the RO district. I understand the concerns for spot zoning, but, and I'm, as I said to you in my note, I'm agnostic on that. But if you're going to extend it to the rest of the RO zoning district, at least recognize what that space is. And to me, it looked like just a form book zoning that did not have, had very little relation to Harvard Grace. I understand that, you know, kinda tried to capture things like porches and fenestration and all that. But, you know, just little telltale signs, like they talk about, uh, the, well, they talk about avenues and, uh, call it Union Avenue. That's the name of the street. You know, show you, recognize where you are. Talked about verges, uh, which is that landscape strip along Union Avenue, um, where the trees are, that are eight feet wide. Well, they're not eight feet wide. They're fifteen feet wide. So it just show, and then it talked about how you'd deal with curved streets. There's no curved streets there. So give us a very site-specific, so if you're gonna impose a form-based zoning, show you understand the area very clearly, and be responsive to that area. Show us the setbacks. The, you can go out and measure the setbacks. You don't have to have fancy formulas for that. And, uh, then, you know, you could maybe come up with that kind of solution. But, you know, on, on, on a couple of levels, specifically on the hospital site, and then trying to apply it to the rest of the RO, you know, I just, I don't think it quite got there.
You, you've put a tremendous amount of work into this memorandum. And I see, um, a big difference between the draft letter that I wrote and the memorandum that you prepared. Your memorandum, um, and I think you're, is great. And what it's focusing on is that the, um, form-based zoning method as presented missed the mark on a lot of things. It just, that's what you're saying here, that it, it, it could have done so much more. And that, that a lot of it almost doesn't apply.
Right.
Here. It's almost like, as if they pull stuff off the shelf that had been used somewhere else, and just said, okay, we'll just put that out here.
It could have applied elsewhere in town, and it could have applied to some of these subdivisions up the hill very nicely. But it doesn't seem to applies as well.
And the draft letter that I wrote is focusing on, didn't, pretty much didn't focus on that at all. It basically said that, um, that form-based zoning probably is the answer for the hospital property.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and I think we, a lot of us came to that conclusion at the last couple of meetings. And what, what my whole draft letter focuses on is, is why it's not a good idea to use that for the rest of the RO district, and that the rest of the RO district ought to be left like it is, and, and not tried to be, uh, uh, brought in under the same umbrella as the hospital property. And that the hospital property, uh, needs to be an overlay, and what I argued in the draft letter are all the reasons why it should be an overlay, and all the reasons why it can be a successful overlay. And that it would, and some very good reasons why it would be hard to challenge that overlay because of the history of all the hospital properties. Uh, we're not dealing with just one parcel of property that belongs to one owner and always did, and, and, you know, moved through the system over two hundred years as a single parcel. That is by clear definition spot zoning. And, but, but as I said in this draft letter, the hospital properties, uh, are a consolidation over many years of many different properties.
Right.
And they are spread across streets, and up streets, and down streets, and they've got right-of-ways running through them and everything else. It's, it's a neighborhood. It's not just a spot property.
Yeah.
It's an entire neighborhood.
And that's the task at hand.
And, and.
The rest of it's not really the task at hand.
Right.
The rest of the RO zoning is not the task.
And, and so to me, it, 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 A, cries out for an overlay. B, the, um, in general, the form-based zoning with the modifications that, uh, that you're proposing, you know, the, the improvements, uh, is the answer for that hospital property? And that, uh, such, such a process to gain approval down the road for different property owners in the rest of our RO would be incredibly onerous. You know, for them to meet all those requirements of, of that type of, uh, form-based zoning. Particularly people that are interested in buying a property, a small property, and suddenly realizing that, uh, they're gonna have to go through all that to do what they wanna do with their little property. Even a significant renovation, much less a tear-down and rebuild. And it just, um, it would just be, um, for one thing, it would be economically infeasible for them to have to go through all that before they can even settle on the property. Unless they wanna take a wild chance. And, and so what I'm gonna propose to us is that we, um, I mean, if you want to tweak anything in the letter draft that I wrote, I don't write perfect letters. But at the same time, I would like for, for this draft letter to now, um, incorporate, your memorandum as an attachment to the letter.
Sure, okay.
And, and, you know, and give you credit for it, you know, and, and just make that as part of the letter, as an attachment.
Okay.
How do you feel about that?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think that's, uh.
Cause it, you've, it's beautifully written.
I appreciate that.
And well-thought-out, and.
It supports your letter.
Yeah, it does.
It does. No, I think, yeah, like I said.
We saw the yin and the yang. I'm the yin, and you're the yang, and we, and together, we came up with something here. But, um, any, um, comments before we, uh, first of all, has anybody got any recommendations for any tweaks? Okay. Then I guess we just go right to a motion. Do I hear a motion that, um, that, that we approve both of these documents, uh?
I did have one small question. And, and your last paragraph, and to consider allowing off-street parking for municipal use to be located on separate.
I'm sorry, say again, in the last paragraph?
Yeah. And to consider allowing off-street parking for principal use to be located on separate non-abutting parcels within this overlay? I'm not sure I understand that.
Okay.
Or whether that's.
Currently, our, our ordinance does not allow, you have to, if you have to have onsite parking, off-street parking, it's gotta be on your parcel. And if, you can't just put your parking on another parcel that can suddenly be sold off somewhere. Uh, it has to be on the same parcel, and that would be really inappropriate for the redevelopment of, of all this acreage. Because I can easily see, um, you know, somebody, or the, us approving, uh, a redevelopment that would require the parking to be right across the street, or on an adjacent, um, unless the, the hospital is gonna consolidate every one of these parcels that, that abut each other. And I think there's still lots of record in there, I, I would imagine. And what this does is this frees up the department, and frees up the, um, um, the redevelopers, uh, to be more imaginative with what they do with that property.
Yeah, I'm looking through mine, too. I don't know if I, uh, mentioned it, but I don't think even the proposed rezoning changes the parking requirement, or does it, Tim?
No, it doesn't.
See, that's, that's something, if we're gonna talk about parking, that's something.
That's, that's for another night, but, but, uh, basically, I'm just putting this recommendation in there to get it started.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I say, well, I would, I would add, if we were gonna consider, that we should consider the park, reconsider the parking requirements on this site, too.
Well, just state it that way.
Yeah, yeah. Just reconsider the parking requirements.
Okay.
Cause three parking spaces per unit is exclusionary and unnecessary. And, uh, and it adds a huge cost to housing.
Okay, I'm gonna put a note here to myself.
Yeah, typically, you know, a more typical way of handling parking is.
In other words, I shouldn't be so specific here.
Yeah, I thi, I think we, we should, yeah, you could just be more general and say the parking requirements.
To, to accommodate, uh, a more imaginative development, or whatever.
Yeah, parking requirements should be reconsidered. Residential parking requirements should be reconsidered.
Okay.
I mean, there's no point having three parking spaces for a one-bedroom apartment.
Well, that's, we've got that problem all over the place. We need to take a big, big look at our off-street parking. Okay, so, uh, any other? Well, do I hear a motion that we consolidate these two documents, and, um, and that you allow your chair to, uh, formalize this and get it off to the mayor and council?
I'll make the motion. I motion that we accept the draft letter that Volney, um, gave us to review with the addition that he added to about the parking, and also attached the memorandum that came from Chip Place for, um, to be sent on to the mayor and the city council members.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I'll, um, I'll call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion on the motion? I'm getting ahead of myself.
Yeah, the one, one thing I would say further is, you know, apparently, spot zoning is a concern. And if it is, you know, I think we should receive a, you know, detailed memorandum on that.
Well, this city.
The city should provide.
Yeah. I'm sure the city attorney will weigh in on that after.
Yeah.
City attorney, I'm sure is gonna read what we've written.
Yeah. And then if that remains, uh, a concern, you know, where it's, it's compelling that this should extend to the rest of the RO district, and maybe my, the rest of my memo comes into play, but, um.
Well, I, I think the city council, and, and mayor and city council are gonna, um, take that into consideration when they finally make a decision on this thing. And, and they're gonna listen to their advice from the city attorney and so forth.
Right.
And we're just, we're just making one, um, recommendation.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would, I'm, I'm sure that some applicant somewhere would try that, if they didn't like what we were doing. Or the hospital itself might try that.
It might.
And they might be successful. They might not be.
Right.
But I know how much mayhem it's gonna cause the rest of the property owners throughout RO to have to deal with, uh, with this very sophisticated zoning system. Okay, so, um, that was your point?
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, I'm gonna call the roll. Uh, I'll start with, uh, Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Place?
Yes.
Ms. Chan?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Garona?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. And we'll take care of that right away. And the chair votes yes, and we'll take care of that right away. And the next item on the agenda is our discussion of our rules and procedures. Um, and I've sent you the second, what's called draft number two. Um, and you all have read the original draft and draft number two, uh, just contained a few, uh, tweaks plus, um, at the very end, at the request of the, uh, city attorney, and when she and I just had a, an off-the-cuff meeting and got on the subject of this, um, she wanted to see something in here regarding, um, uh, contact, our contact with the applicant and the public during pending cases. And particularly if we make a site visit, if we go out to visit a site, there should be things that, I mean, we have to be careful, is basically what we, you know, it's okay to learn as much as we can about the, the proposed project, it's okay to, um, ask the applicant or their representatives, um, certain things to get a clearer picture of the project, but there are also some things that it's not appropriate for us to engage in in a way of discussion, you know, such as offering any semblance of opinion, um, you know, or tending to agree with them about certain things. In other words, we should strictly, um, keep our counsel when we're around applicants out in the field. Uh, out in the field can mean right out in this hallway or can mean standing out in the field on their piece of land. But, and, and the same thing would, uh, you know, of course, we should avoid any kind of, um, back-channel conversations and so forth and so on. We have to, we have to be careful. And, um, now, she's probably gonna add some more stuff to this. This is, what I'm asking you for tonight is for you to approve this document, um, if, if it's satisfactory to you, to approve it for me to send to the city, to, to hand to the city attorney so that the city attorney can take her shot at it. And then it's gonna come back to us. So this is where, and I believe, I, I read where we also, I believe the mayor and council has to approve this thing. I, I'm-
I don't think so?
I thought I, I was surprised, but I thought I read that in our planning commission. I'll double-check that, but the other day when I was reading, uh, the planning commission's, um, section, um, it, it mentioned something about that.
Oh, I thought it was just internal, but maybe you're correct.
But if it's just internal, that's, that'll be the end of it, once it comes back, uh, from city attorney and, but we're gonna, this is, tonight's not our final vote on this, is what I'm saying. Just asking for a vote, ship it over to the city attorney. Any discussion on that? Anybody wanna correct anything in here?
I, I do have a comment, though.
Yes.
Um, so, this is just our, up, the rules of operations for our sessions and our meetings. This has nothing to do with, for example, how, let's say, some of us get renewed in our, our commissions and our timelines, that's a separate topic, right?
Well, that's in the city ordinance, how that happens.
Okay.
You know, this is just, uh, our rules of procedure, this is how we, um, conduct a meeting.
Internally.
It's internal to us, yeah. And, um, but, but, um, we have to live by the, the city code as to what the planning commission is supposed to do and what it's not supposed to do. That's handed down by mayor and council. And I'm sure you've all read that. Um, it's, um, and if you, if any of you haven't, I'll be glad to get you, uh, copies of that and you can see how we're, and they just added some things, they just made a few little changes to it this summer.
Read it, yes. Memorized it, no.
I thought it was kinda cute where they, uh, put this one little section in there that allowed up to two people that were non-citizens as long as they lived in a zip code to serve on the planning commission. And, um, I, I kinda wondered where that came from, you know?
Non-residents.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, that was the Harry and Volney clause, I think. Otherwise, we would've been bye-bye. Um, okay, any more discussion on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I sent you a note on this too. Um, I have a problem with the, uh, with the language about engaging the applicant in the field.
Okay.
Um, you know, I've, I've read the state statute and it certainly gives the planning commissioners the right to enter anybody's property and to take measurements. It's silent, though, on discussions with an applicant. And I find it incre- as I mentioned, I, I happened to run into Mr. Ensor when I went to go look at the decoy museum right before this meeting, and he said, "I always go to the site just before a meeting so I know exactly what's going on." So I find it incredibly helpful to be out in the field, especially with a design professional, um, cause you can only glean so much from the drawings. And often the drawings on subdivision drawings, you know, the base, uh, surveys are not really clear, and until you get out there and, and just as an architect, when you're, I, you know, it's as, as important, if not more important, to see the job in the field as it is to look at drawings. So it's really important to be out there and it's really important to be out there, if you can, with the person who's drawn the plans. So I would be, I would not want to be censored in any way in talking to, especially a design professional out in the field to understand what the intent, what's going on in those drawings. And, um, I think I would even go so far as to require mandatory site visits, that happens in other jurisdictions and where, it doesn't mean it's mandatory to us, but it's mandatory for the applicant to make the site available, have their design professional onsite, and even flag the job, like the center line of a road, so everybody can see what's going on in the field. So I would take it in the other direction, actually. And if, and I would, I would leave that out and I would have, I would ask the city attorney to come back to us with specific authority on what's allowed and what's not allowed, if she feels that's an issue. Um, but I would not volunteer that and, uh-
Here, here's what it says, I'm gonna read it in the record. Commissioners are encouraged to engage in site visits where appropriate, which is what you're saying-
Mm-hmm.
-to gain clarification of facts and details of proposed work and to better understand engineered documents.
Mm-hmm.
But then there's a but.
Right.
But in doing so, shall not express opinion or discuss merits of the case with the applicant or their representatives. That's all it says.
Right.
It just says, we, we can't get into, um, it's inappropriate to get into those kind of discussions to, to tell the applicant what we think about the case or how we're gonna vote or anything like that.
Well, I think that's, gets very blurry, I would just eliminate that.
Well, it's, it's meant to, I mean, the city attorney is, I'm sure is gonna massage that paragraph.
Well, then let her provide that-
Let's see what she says.
Let her provide that language and, and authority behind it.
But bas- basically, my intent was to encourage us to do a site visit.
Yep.
I'm not sure, I'm, I would, I would make a mandatory, but to strongly encourage it.
Yep.
Um, and the state law already allows us to enter, in the, in the, anytime we're considering a case, we are by state law allowed to trespass.
Right, no, that's all good.
And we can trespass on whatever property and like, if we have to look at the back of their property by walking down the CSX railroad line, the railroad can't lock us up either.
Right.
You know, because we are allowed to trespass to, to gain knowledge about a property.
Right, that is what the state law says, that's correct.
Now-
But the rest of it is not in the state law.
Right. Um, and that's, uh, let's see what she says.
I would leave it out and have her come back, put it on-
Well, she asked me to put that in there. She asked me to put something in there to that effect, and so that's what, I, I tried to keep it as-
And I'm asking that she provide authority on that and why, why, why she, no, I, I-
What, she asked me to do it and I tried to keep it as simple as I possibly could. I didn't get into the weeds on that paragraph, I just kept it really simple. And, um, and frankly, I don't know, you know, I don't know. It's, there's gotta be something in our-
Then let her provide that.
Hmm?
Let her provide that, that's what I would say.
I personally like that.
I, I do.
I don't want to be having a discussion with somebody that I'm at their place looking at it.
And that's what this forum is for, you know?
And having them ask me questions, I can say I'm not allowed to discuss that, gives me-
Yeah, can't discuss a case.
The, the clarity that I can, I don't have to go there. That's why I like it, I like to have the authority to say, "I, I can't speak to that."
But, but I like, I like the flexibility that we can go there, we can take a look at it to our heart's content-
I love that.
And, and come back here in this forum-
Right.
And, and debate it. Nothing is preventing me from, from going there and looking at it.
Yeah, all of our discussions and debates supposed to be right out in public, it's not supposed to be-
And I think that's all what I need as a commissioner.
Yeah, and that we should all have the same information.
Yeah. Right, well, that's why I would suggest it would be better that we, we have real site visits as a group and then everybody gets, sees it together.
You're talking about us all getting together and going out together?
Yes, and everybody sees it together, everybody asks, uh, the same questions.
That's gonna be-
Yeah, that's not feasible.
It's gonna be darn near impossible.
I mean, you, you, our timings, our schedules may not work, you know?
I, it's, it's not uncommon, really.
And we're not supposed to gather in groups of more than, we're not supposed to constitute a core.
Yeah, no, you'd have to, you'd publish the site visit and the public would come too. That's not uncommon, that really isn't.
That's, that's an idea.
Okay, what, um, we gotta get on with this.
So can I propose a motion?
I would like to, I'd like to have a motion.
No, we didn't do that, we didn't do a motion on this. So my, my motion is that you provide this to the attorney like you're planning to for her comments or feedback. And then it comes, you said it'll come back to us anyway, we'll have another opportunity, right?
Okay, so you, you move that we, um, send this document as prepared to the city attorney and request, uh, comment.
Yeah, and then we address whatever we still have issue on.
And-
Second.
You second? Let me get this down.
Can I offer a friendly amendment on that, hopefully?
Okay.
Send it to her and ask for clarification and authority on, on proper communications, that's good.
I was gonna offer to do that anyway.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay.
All right, I forgot how to do a friendly amendment, but-
Would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yeah, yeah, I, I- I would, I like the word friendly.
Would, would you, would you like to just restate your-
Based on, based on, based on a friendly amendment?
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, seek, uh, for the clarity from the city attorney on, on the authority for, um, what's appropriate communication.
And you accept that amendment?
Yep.
Yes, there's a second, okay.
My understanding was she was only going to do that anyway, right?
Yeah, I was gonna do it anyway, yeah.
Right.
So, um, we have a motion, a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, uh, I'll call the roll on that one. Um, Mr. Garono?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Place?
Yes.
Ms. Chan?
Yes.
And Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay, now. Thank you very much. Now we move to the two other new items on the agenda that these gentlemen have been so patiently waiting, waiting for, and I apologize, but we had to, we had to get those things, uh, done. I lost my dag on.
One each, mine.
It was, it was in that pile there.
There we go. Too many papers. Nope, that's the wrong one.
Down here.
Looking for my agenda.
Oh, the agenda, okay.
Yeah. Here it is, right.
Group living?
Got it. So now we're gonna take up a discussion of the proposed text amendment to chapter 205 zoning for group living. Is that what you folks are here for, the group living?
No, sir.
Oh, you're here for the veterinarian?
Yes, sir.
Is anybody here for the group living?
They're, oh, okay, you're here for that. Oh, yeah, that's right, you're with Mount Zion Church, sorry, yeah, I saw that gentleman with chap was here, but he looks like he's left. Yes, there's somebody, there's one person here.
Well, group, uh, group living is on the, uh, agenda next, so we're gonna have to take it in order.
So I had, um, brought this to the planning commission about a year ago and, uh, the planning commission had, I don't know if it was a formal vote, but recommended that since this was a change in the R O zoning district, that it wait until the full R O changes were being done, since that included the hospital. So the thought was that, um, at Mount Zion Church, um, it's in the R O district, there was a discussion to turn that into a veteran, a veteran, uh, group living facility. So, um, there would be places in there for, um, veterans for, for short-term, uh, living and then there, in the top floor, there'd be an area for, um, uh, different facilities, counseling, that sort of thing. So that was a proposed use at, at, um, Mount Zion Church. It's not currently in the code in the R O district. Um, the reason it is back in front of you is because, um, some of the council members had went out and visited Mount Zion Church and, um, they've had, uh, different discussions and, and thoughts on having this there. So it was requested by, um, I'm not sure if it was the mayor or the council president or both, but that a, um, an official recommendation be provided about allowing this as a conditional use in the R O zoning district. It's only, it, it would affect the whole district as, um, as it's written now, but , uh, the, the proposals for one specific site.
Can, can you give us an example of what household living, uh, scenario?
Um, I'd have to go back and look at the definition, but I think household living is just normal family living. And I think it just, that, that definition's put in to separate it from a group living.
I'm, I'm, I'm reading the definition right here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I made copies, Diane hurriedly made copies, cause some of us couldn't get this out of the, uh-
Okay.
-Google Drive. And so, um, I'm seeing it for the first time tonight and I think a couple other people are too. But, um, if you could just tell us what, what's an example of, of household living?
Well, there's group living and household living. So group living is what I just explained to you now. Household living would be a family living in a home. It wouldn't necessarily be a group living environment where there's, there's two definitions if you look. So there, the request today really is for group living. The household living definition is in there to separate a normal household from a group living environment. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you're looking at, so I'm not sure if you have the definition for group living in front of you.
I've got the definition, there's three different definitions here, one is called household living, one's called group living, and one's called senior living.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, it's, it's written in such a way, these definitions, that, um, you kinda wonder, what, what are they trying to accomplish? What, what, what's the purpose of this? What, what's it for?
Right, so we had a proposal come in for group living for a veteran home at Mount Zion Church, which would provide smaller living areas for, for veterans, short-term. And then in the same facility, it would allow certain services to be performed, whether that was counseling, whether that was certain types of training. So that's what's being proposed at Mount Zion Church. The other two items that are in there is household living to separate the idea of what's a normal household from this idea of group living that I just mentioned. And then the senior living piece was- And then the senior living piece was also, would also be incorporated into the new R O zoning. That would go along with the density bonuses that were showed in the, um, in the consultant's draft R O zoning. And that just goes to the HUD definition to basically say, whatever HUD says at that time, uh, a senior, a senior is, a person that would live in a senior living facility. So that's just controlled by, by federal law, so it just relates back to that. So those are those three definitions.
And so none of the three definitions, none of the three terms are currently in the, in the code?
They're not currently defined, no. 'Cause I, I don't think we have, I don't think we allow group living in the city anywhere unless it would be in the industrial area, 'cause it's not specifically listed.
So what the, what, um, the administration's asking us to do is just to, um, make a recommendation about the way, I guess, the way these definitions are written?
No, they're, they're trying to, they're trying to determine whether this proposed use at Mount Zion Church and, and how it would be proposed throughout the R O zoning district is appropriate for the R O zoning district. Why or why not, uh, is what they're looking for. They need, they want more, more meat to the recommendation.
Now, why would it be appropriate for the R O district and not the R B district?
Uh, we're just taking the R O into consideration tonight because the Mount Zion Church is in the R O zoning district, and that's where the proposal was, was given.
By, by what?
The Mount Zion Church.
Okay, so this is being driven by this one?
Yes, absolutely, yep.
Okay, now we're getting a little closer to...
Is it Mount Zion?
I, I'd mentioned that at the beginning a few times. Sorry if, if you didn't understand me.
Is it Mount Zion in Churchville?
No, Mount Zion here in Havitt Grace, the church.
Is it Mount Zion here?
Yeah, next to the Lisa Scott Funeral Home.
Okay, okay.
Okay, um...
It seems to me that there, there must be other groups that are living this way now.
I don't think there's that institutional piece, that counseling, that, that, I don't know if it's a community center, but there's an area that would offer services in Mount Zion Church. That doesn't exist now. So there's housing for, for certain groups of people that are living in apartments that are, are subsidized or funded in a certain way. I think the addition of the services is the, is the part that doesn't exist in our code.
So this would, um, if this is accepted, then any one of these, let's just use that church as an example, that any one of these types of living would be appropriate, appropriate use in that church, in that current church building?
No, so we would add those three definitions to the code, but then I think what it shows at the bottom was, would be as a conditional use, group living would be allowed in the R O district. But without those definitions, we, we wouldn't know what group living is. So the idea would be to allow group living as a conditional use in the R O based on those definitions. But household living is allowed in the R O district. I mean, it's allowed in any residential district in the city.
That's traditional. It doesn't use the word family or related parties here, but...
There, there's, I, I'd have to, I'd have to look at the definition, but it, it really is in there to set apart this sort of, this home that provides services versus more of a normal household living.
Okay, we're gonna hear from, uh, gentlemen here in just a minute and probably learn a little bit more about what the purpose of all this is, but I wanna see what other questions we have of you.
Please, thank you. Um, so...
Pull that in close.
Yeah, sure. So I, I wanna separate two things, and, and one is, is, um, we're asked to look at an ordinance not to make a judgment on a, an applicant's case, right? So that, that makes it kinda difficult that there is an element here that's maybe trying to influence a decision, right? That's my first thought. Second, it's currently not allowed now. So we're asking, based upon maybe one applicant, regardless of the merits, to allow this over everywhere. And it's kinda loosely defined, in my opinion, on, you know, this list is not exhaustive, okay? So what else could be on that list? I don't know. And I'm not gonna speculate. One of the questions I would have for you is, is if the applicant, without this ordinance, the applicant asks for this, is this something that could be approved by the Board of Appeals?
No.
Without, no.
No, 'cause a variance would allow, would allow something based on the strict reading of the code. I think since this is not in there, it wouldn't, I don't think you can have a variance to add something in. So I, I, I would say no.
So they couldn't get a conditional use from the Board of Appeals if it's not?
Definitely not a conditional use. This would require some sort of variance from the strict reading of the code.
Understood.
But since it's not in there, it wouldn't really, yeah.
I thought I'd ask that, because again, I'm trying to separate that element from this. Because as this is, you know, um, it's not for me.
I have a question regarding that.
Sure.
Um, isn't, can you not just have a one, like a variance for one particular, like this is one place, one group wanting to do something? Can't you just do a variance in this one particular instance without changing the entire R O structure?
I mean, not that I'm aware of, because the way that our zoning's set up, we have a use schedule. And in the use schedule, it's, it's not, it's just not allowed anywhere. And our zoning code says anything not explicitly allowed in the zoning code is allowed in our industrial district. So that's sort of the thing that kinda pushes it somewhere else. So I mean, it is, it is allowed in our, our code technically, in the, as a conditional use in industrial. But I, I don't know another way to get it in a specific place without allowing it as a, as a, in the use schedule.
Okay.
And, and churches are allowed, they're a permitted use in any district, correct?
Um...
Am I right?
I believe so.
If, if not, federal law, um, i- is pretty strong about allowing, uh, religious uses in residential areas.
And, and so what I'm saying is, is if this church, and again, I'm sorry, I keep bringing it back in, was in just R two or R B, then we would be asking for this for our, all of R B, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's the way that it, that's the way that it works. I think that's one, um, one beauty of the conditional use is that even though, you know, we're looking at, um, we're looking at a district change based on the proposal at one site, that the conditional use sort of can be catered to each individual site. It doesn't allow it automatically. So if there was a place that wasn't Mount Zion, in this case, that was inappropriate for this use, then we would recommend to the Board of Appeals that they wouldn't allow that at that, at that specific site. So that's why we're, we're putting it as conditional use and not as, as permitted. It gives us another, another layer to approval, and then, you know, there's always that in-between. If there's, if there are some issues, maybe there's conditions we can place on it to sort of, um, manage those, those issues that come up.
Tim, could you remind us what the criteria, the difference in criteria between a conditional use and maybe a special exception could be?
In our code, there, there's not really one. I mean, so I think technically there's a difference between special exception and conditional use. But, um, conditional use and special exceptions both look at, uh, this ten-step criteria in chapter 25 that are basically, um, um, more specific ways to look at the, um, health and general welfare of the public and how it affects them. So it asks more specific questions about odor, noise, dust, hours of operation, that sort of thing. Um, it gets, it gets into more details, but it's in that overall sort of, what we call the police power of, of, um, of the government that allows zoning controls.
Yeah. 'Cause this, as, um, Harry suggests, this does open the door for a number of different types of uses.
Yeah, and I mean, that could be one of the things that you all mentioned tonight. Maybe there, maybe, maybe the recommendation is that this needs to be a more exhaustive list. I, not to put words in your mouth, but, um, maybe it needs to be...
A more specific list.
Maybe need to be more carry, yeah, maybe it needs to be more specific to one, one type of, of thing. I mean...
Yeah.
And it, it's unfortunate because this is coming up before they would actually come up with their site plan. But this isn't, you know, like, um, a fly-by-night organization. I mean, they are receiving grant funding from the V A, and it's a substantial amount of funding. Um, they have experience in, in other places where they run this type of facility. So I mean, it's not, like I said, kinda your run-of-the-mill type place, but I also get your concerns that, you know, it's a little bit different in this, but if it was like a store, for instance, you could be like, oh, yeah, a conditional use, I love that store. And then it comes under new management or goes under a different store. Um, there are some things that are, you know, more difficult to, to control, but I guess that could also be part of, um, part of all of your recommendation.
Yeah. Well, one thing I worried about was, you know, I'm not trying to be exclusionary, okay? So by just enumerating a couple of things that's, um, not exhaustive, might exclude somebody. So there again, I'm still like, it, why hasn't it been allowed before?
I mean, our zoning code was created in 1982, and there were a lot of compromises and stuff at the time, my understanding, to even get that in, so, um, it's hard to say. I mean, even the structure of the V A and the type of grants and the way that these organizations are, are constructed now is probably very different than what it was in 1982 when we adopted the zoning code. It, it's just hard to say. I mean, yeah.
And again, I'm, I'm trying to separate, I mean, I don't want this misconstrued. I'm a veteran myself, right? This has nothing to do with veterans.
Right.
It's this.
It's nothing to do with who it is. It's...
Right.
The, the, the physical circumstances. And, you know, what, what's odd to me is that location, being zoned R O, is very different than across the street from where I live, for instance. I mean, that, you know, it's the surroundings, the type of buildings, the, it's, it's just totally different. So my concern would be saying yes to that site would be fairly easy, but to make this, um, you know, a possibility in all R O zoned areas, uh, that would, that's what concerns me.
Yeah, that's fair. I, I think, I think it goes back to what I said earlier, and maybe something that Chip was, was hinting at, that, um, maybe requiring it as a, a special exception or conditional use and having some sort of, I guess you'd have to have a belief in the, the process that when Board of Appeals looks at this, and then in this situation, it would come back to Planning Commission because it's a, it is a change in use. We'd have to look at parking and a lot of other things that, in that process, um, you'd have to trust that it would, would bring out the best result for the city.
Yeah, and to be frank about it, this, you know, this might be a use that's very welcomed by the community. Other uses that come into this might cause serious controversy.
So household living, um, of the, of these, uh, when you, it's a facility providing occupancy of a dwelling unit or multiple units by one or more households, um, on a monthly or longer basis. I assume that th- these occupants are there for free. They're not paying rent. Is that correct?
So what's gonna be going in this facility is proposed as group living. So you keep going back to the household living definition? What will be occurring at this site is in the group living definition, which is veteran housing. So that's what I'm saying. The hu- household living is separate from, from group living. It defines a normal household versus the type of living that would occur in a short-term facility with, um, with certain counseling and amenities and that sort of thing.
I mean, it seems to me that household living is, is, is a normal thing. And, uh, it's just, if, if they're paying rent, they're paying very short-term rent.
Right.
But there's nothing in our, our ordinance that specifies how long a rental term has to be. So, uh, in other words, anybody can rent anything for whatever period they wanna rent.
Yeah, I guess I'm...
My, my, my question is, why, why is there even a, it necessary to have a household living definition?
To separate it clearly from group living and senior living. It's, it's just to clarify that, that there's a different type of living, so that there's, it, it's just a clarification.
So it would seem to me then that the household living definition needs to be sharpened. In fact, and one way to sharpen it is, is to, is, is to basically stipulate that it's, does not do the things that are in group living. For instance, in household living, uh, each, each dwelling unit has its own kitchen or cooking facility. And each one, and each family or individual is separately compartmented. In other words, they're, they're separately secured from everybody else. And that, you, you know, you would specifically say that.
Okay.
But, but I think that, um, when it really comes down to it, there's, there's, there's really no need for that. I mean, a group living facility can stand by itself as a definition. It doesn't have to say, but then there's another definition that describes normal living, if you will. You know what I mean?
Um, except in the case that someone tries to squeeze in a, a group living facility and say it's actually not a group living facility, that it's a normal type household. So I think that's why it was, was put in, just to, to be clear. I guess, I guess what's the harm of having it in there?
Well, I guess it just makes it hard on us when it gets us, you know, it, it...
Yeah, I can, yeah, I mean, I'll, um...
It kinda...
Okay.
You ask yourself, why is that in there? But, um, there's no question that group living is a common cook, you know, eating facilities.
Mm-hmm.
And there's no question that it's, it's more like a dormitory-style living, um, a halfway house-type environment or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
And we've got those all over Havitt Grace right now. I mean, we've got those here.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that, again, the issue with this one is that, um, there's no, there's no onsite counseling and other amenities provided. So that's, that's what makes it a group living facility, is that they're planning in, in part of the, the church. So some of it will be for, some of it will be living quarters, but there'll be other places where there's services provided. And that's not occurring in the same place.
But I mean, we've already got something in the ordinance that covers, essentially covers group living, whether or not it says that it comes with, um, counseling services. I don't, I don't know if that's in there.
Does it make a difference?
And, and what difference does that make?
Yeah.
Yeah, and is the counseling, i- it's really more important in a group living situation is to have an onsite person of responsibility
Yeah.
that controls the place. And I don't know if our ordinance speaks to that, but that's the, that's the key to the whole thing, is...
Yeah, I'm not sure in our ordinance where...
Has to be a resident manager there.
Yeah, I mean, I think these are, I think this is all good, um, good conversation. I'm not sure where in our ordinance it says that any use like this is allowed or that it's defined in, in our code. That's why this is in front of you. If I, I mean, if it already existed somewhere...
I'm pretty sure it is, 'cause we've had a number of cases come before the planning commission over the last, um, ten, twenty years.
With services provided in the same building?
Well, it didn't say that, but it, but it said it's group living. We've got a, we've already allow group living.
But when we, I think, I think the difference was, I think those ones like had kitchens.
They, they were all probably just normal apartments.
Very small apartments.
They were used...
With services, but I, I think they had...
They were for a certain population. They were for a certain population, but they weren't dormitory, is my understanding. They weren't dormitory-style rooms with shared kitchen facilities. They were just apartment buildings that housed a certain group of people that had a need and that those needs weren't necessarily treated on site.
We'll have to go back, um, and take a hard look at that. I really think that, um, I don't know, I, I'm not sure we're prepared to act on this tonight.
Okay, um, what do you need from me to be able to act on it?
More research needs to be done.
Yeah, we need, we need to dig into this, 'cause we just, some of us have just seen this for the first time, and we need to compare it to what our ordinances are currently saying.
Okay, I'll put it on the next agenda.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Could there be a motion to, uh, recommend this, and then people vote yes or no? And if it's no, then it, you know, they have to come back with something different?
Though, the thing with this one, they don't want just a normal recommendation. They kinda wanted a more detailed why or why not.
What, what are they seeking?
The mayor and council want a, a recommendation with details of why or why, why not this group believes it's appropriate or where the issues are with, with what you have. So if you're not prepared to do that tonight, then I guess I need to know what...
It's just gonna be hard for us to shape a, shape a...
Understood. I just need to know what...
A written reply to mayor and council.
Right.
Um, when there's so many things that we don't know sitting here.
Yeah, I guess I just need to know what you don't know, so I can get that information to you, so this can be considered on the next agenda. I'm sorta un, unclear.
We should just go ahead and act on this?
Well, he's saying that's not what they're looking for right now, because I was just gonna say that the recommendation could be to recommend it, and then you get no, 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 or yes, 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 yes. You know what I'm saying?
Okay, well, I wanna hear from this gentleman here also.
Yeah.
Sir, would you come up and give us your name and address? And tell us what you know.
My name is Randy Barnes. I reside at 566 Lewis Street, which is down the street from the, um, church. Also... Also have a property at 834 North Junior Street. Just want to make some clarifications in reference to this specific opportunity. First and foremost, I believe there are already halfway houses or facilities like this in the town of Habit Grace. I've been in Habit Grace for 60 years, first and foremost. This facility is going to be a council setting with strict restrictions. It's just not one of your typical halfway houses or whatever you want. It's transition housing for veterans to get them back into society, okay? That's the first and foremost thing. Being a member of the Mount Zion Baptist Church, we have had opportunities in trying to sell this facility. Very limited, as you know, church will be the ultimate thing to do. Churches don't have the finances. We got approached by this opportunity. We thought it was a very good opportunity for, just not for the church, but also for the community, first and foremost. When you're talking about the RO, I have not had the opportunity to read your literature as far as what's a different group housing and, and your other scenarios, whatever your terminology is, to really get down to detail what, what the difference is. As far as the, the group housing setting, it's not the traditional situation that you would think it would be. I do reside in that area. I live in that area. I'm a block from that. It is, to me, will be an opportunity because you don't have a lot of residential houses in that area. Everything was around there was doctors' offices, the hospitals there. All of that stuff is basically gone. Whatever the hospital is planning on doing with that, I don't know. That's been brought up in this conversation today. So I would like for you to consider the situation to get more knowledge. The actual purchasing person could come and give you a great presentation to let you know a little bit more about what the whole process is going to be doing. But it's not the typical scenario. There are going to be individual rooms with a group setting with counseling, security. It's a very intense program that this organization runs. So I just want to make that clear to the, to the council right now to let you know. It's not the typical situation that you would think it is. So if you have any other questions you might have for me for what I have announced, I would like to answer, answer some of those questions.
So the scenario that you're describing would be that the, the folks that are living there will be living in their own private rooms.
That is correct.
And they will be sharing communal spaces, you know, just recreation room, a TV room, this and that and the other, and that they will be, have common cooking and eating facilities, correct?
That is correct, which is already at the facility.
Okay. And that the place will be staffed?
That is correct.
Okay. And the reason I'm trying to build this picture is so that I can see for myself how it fits into the ordinance that we, ordinances we already have and how it fits into this proposed change to the ordinance, so these definitions. The key, the trick is always in the definitions.
That is correct.
You know, it's, and when it comes to those kind of social setting situations, there's, there's every kind of setup that you can imagine. You know, every, every organization, every group has a slightly different twist to its setup. And we, if we're going to get into these definitions, we need to make sure that we're not wrapping ourselves around the axle in trying to overdefine or underdefine something where when a case then comes in front of us, the Planning Commission doesn't know which way to turn. You know, what, what do we call this? You know, that, how does it fit, you know, and all that kind of thing? So I don't sense that anybody sitting up here is, is opposed to your mission. I, I just think that we're probably trying to get our arms around the definitions.
And I, I do also, I would like to have more knowledge on.
Yeah.
What's your definition as the, as, as a city council and in the zoning commission? Because you say RO and, and this is a specific, and I understand you want to open it up to the entire community. Believe me, I would not want it to be in a residential.
See, once, once, once we, we, the city adopts these definitions, we have to live by them.
That's correct.
And, and, and particularly the Planning Commission and the Planning Department are the two that have to really live by these things. And we, to live by them, that means we got to understand them.
That is correct.
Yeah, and that's the thing. Yes, sir.
So I want to be just clear again that this is, we're not, haven't been asked to review an application for something that until just now, I had no clue what might be pushing this. And when I reviewed this, my, my comments remain the same. My issue is not with this, my issue's with this.
Yeah.
Okay? I just want to be clear about that.
Well, the question I have for you then, what is the issue? I, I understand the, the group housing. What is the definition between group housing and your, your other definition, which you already have zoning for, as I guess you, you may determine as a halfway house? What, what is that determination between these two from group housing to halfway house?
Okay.
So that's something.
And I'm not trying to draw a parallel there, okay? I just know that some things have come before, like you said, that were similar in nature, that were permitted or conditional or something like that that was similar. I think that that might need to be looked at because maybe this some way falls under that, okay? Without having to rewrite an ordinance that allows a non-exhaustive list in RO. That's all.
Well, it's, it's pretty obvious to me that what you're talking about clearly fits group living and not the other two. You know, it's, that's pretty easy to parse out here. But you've been most helpful with your, you know, telling us a little bit more about what you're doing and, and what we're going to see what we can do is to try to do the right thing with this.
I greatly appreciate that and I'd like to get that information as far as terminology between that also. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Thank you so much for doing what you're doing because as a vet and I'm married to a vet and this guy's a vet and there's probably other vets up here as well. We definitely appreciate what that is, what you're doing on that. And, and it's a big deal. For me, it's all about exactly what was just said. We need to get the paperwork proper before we make decisions on things that could ultimately affect us all the way down the road. So thank you.
Yeah, Tim, what I would suggest is, I think examples of included uses but not exhaustive opens the door pretty wide. And I would look on framing this more narrowly and including some of the criteria, you know, that Mr. Barnes would be including within his facility, but ideas like central kitchens, counseling, supervision, security. You know, try to, try to frame it as narrowly as possible. So people have a real expectation of what this use might be.
Okay.
Is it, are you seeking comments from us tonight? Or are you seeking us to, are you wanting us to, to write a letter to mayor and council with very specific recommendations?
That's what they've asked for. That's what the mayor and council have asked, that's what the mayor and, sorry, council president have asked for. We can, yeah, I mean, if, as long as, I mean, Chip just gave me some good direction now. If there's some more things you all would love me to look at so I can prepare.
I'd like to work on this too.
Okay, great.
And I'd like to perhaps, you know, I realize we can't discuss or debate this thing outside of this room, but I would like to maybe write a, write up some remarks that might be draft remarks that we would send to mayor and council and I will send them to the rest of the commissioners.
What is allowed is, so if Volney sends an email, you guys can all reply directly to Volney. You just can't reply all. So there can be some discussion to get, to get closer for next month.
Right.
Just want to let you know that.
Because I'd like to be able to act on this at the next meeting.
Yeah, I agree. Okay.
Yeah, I don't see anything in the RO zone that would permit something like this. So I don't know what's happened in the past, but it's not listed in here, so. Yeah, it might have been, but so, but it should be, it should be very narrow.
Okay. And we finally get to these gentlemen. Been a long night. The last item on the agenda is discussion of proposed text amendments to chapter 205 for veterinarian clinics as a permitted conditional use in the RB zoning district.
Very similar situation, different type of vet in this case. There's a proposal in the RB district to allow veterinarian, that, there's a veterinarian clinic that wants to come in. Mr. Snee will be able to talk more about that specifically. Since the RB district is pretty expansive, we wanted to have the, we wanted to allow it because we think that in this instance, it's probably appropriate to be allowed where they're asking. But maybe there's some spots in the RB district because it's such a big district where it's not allowed. So we thought conditional use would be the best vehicle to make that happen.
Can I ask a question? Let me ask a question.
What?
I want to ask a question.
Yes.
So again, and I appreciate these gentlemen being here. I just want to be consistent. We're asked to evaluate an ordinance without any human element behind it, okay? So I don't know if it makes a difference that they're here or not. The, the other thing, so that, that was generally the first comment. The second thing is, this is different from the other one, in my opinion, because if you look at the list and it goes back to what you said before, it's not allowed now because it doesn't specifically say it. But everything else on this list is similar in nature to what you see in regular. And so this one, on the other hand, in my opinion, fits. It's underlined because it's added.
Now, I'll just comment procedurally. I, I get the frustration that you're not like reviewing a site plan today and being asked to approve of that. So it's sort of this like nebulous idea. But a site plan couldn't come to you if it's not allowed in the zoning district. So it's, yeah, it's just the way that it has to work out.
All I'm saying is I appreciate the people coming. We weren't, we weren't asked to evaluate their operation, what they're going to do there. We're asked to just look at an ordinance and decide, you know, does that category that's being suggested to be added to it, does it make sense? And in this particular case, when you look at the rest of the conditional uses where they would have to go to the Board of Appeals and the Board of Appeals would have to approve it, you know, based upon whatever plan they submit, then to me, this one is a lot different and straightforward.
Yeah, kind of like a no-brainer.
Yeah, and that's me, no brains.
Yeah, RB district is, you heard me say this before. It's what I call the Wild West District. It's almost anything goes and it's quite a mixture. And when you go down this long list, A through Z, before we get to this one, there's all kinds of stuff in here that's, you, you, there's a bunch of stuff in here you might not want right next door to your house, but you're in the RB district and so it's allowed. And the reason for the conditional use is because an animal care facility or veterinary clinic might be plenty fine in one place in the RB district, but might be terrible in another place. You know, it'd be very undesirable. It'd be totally inappropriate to put it over there in the RB district, but very appropriate over here. And so I certainly think that it needs to be a conditional use. I certainly think that these kind of facilities should be on the list for consideration for the RB district. There's no doubt about that. It's my opinion. Anything else?
Just quickly, the, the mayor and council did not require the, this kind of exceptional recommendation on this one. This is your normal run-of-the-mill zoning change. So yeah, just, just putting that out there that.
Yeah.
This one isn't being requested to have that much detail.
Okay. Anybody on the commission have any further questions of Jim at the moment? I'd like now to hear from the applicant's representative and your name and address, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Director, members of the audience. Joseph Francis Snee Jr., Snee Luch in Helminger, PA, 112 South Main Street, Bel Air 21014. With me over my right shoulder is Mr. McCollum, who has an interest in the property we're about to discuss. Just by waving aside, in 1982, I started out as a law clerk with Woodfield Leaf and Hirsch. Frank Hirsch was the City of Habit Grace attorney at the time. And as a young law clerk, I had a very small role in Habit Grace's first zoning ordinance, which Frank decided should be 15 pages or less.
Poor guy.
So, and it was. But with that, I'd like to frame the discussion if I could pass something out.
Say yes.
Thank you. So before you is just a little presentation that Mr. McCollum and I put together. And the table of contents is there for your reference. We start off with the subject property, which is the genesis for this discussion. It's known as 1800 Revolution Street and it was the former bank site. It's approximately .5 acres. The current owner is Marcus H., Marcus WHB Real Estate Holdings. That's a limited liability company from out of state. The contract purchaser would be Sanctuary Realty LLC, which is Mr. and Mrs. McCollum. As you discussed, it's the RB existing district, which does not permit veterinarian clinics. It's a hole, if you will, in the zoning code. And we were respectfully requesting consideration to plug that hole to allow this type of use in the RB district. When I spoke with the director, or my paralegal did, we had a principal permitted use request. Tim suggests we consider the conditional use. There was an excellent question, what's the difference between a conditional use and a special exception? Maryland courts have ruled consistently they're synonymous anymore. So with that in mind, we, we drop that in as a conditional use for your consideration. The existing RB district, as you know, is codified at 20526. It does bifurcate now principally permitted uses, which is paragraph B, as in boy. And they run the gamut from single-family homes up to boutique hotels. And then 20527 are your conditional uses. Principally permitted, of course, we, means we could do it as a matter of right, subject to sound engineering and so forth. Conditional use is just that. We have to prove that the impact at this Revolution Street is no different than a similarly situated impact at a RB district anywhere in the city. It's the seminal case known as Pritzvee Schultz. Every land use attorney in, in the state of Maryland knows, knows that case. And that, that's the, that's the guiding case in Maryland for special exceptions or conditional use, which are in fact synonymous. Behind tab three, you'll see with the black dot, that's the location of the subject property. It is surrounded by a smorgasbord. It is surrounded by a smorgasbord of existing zoning classifications, but right in the heart, you'll see the RB, uh, district. And the surrounding ones are highlighted in different colors. Uh, behind tab four, you also see the property. And that's, uh, outlined in black with the black dot. And then we move on to tab five, and that's the, uh, satellite image of the property now, showing the existing former bank, the drive, uh, through facilities and so forth. And then finally, I took a draft, uh, shot with tab six, which I added as a conditional use, veterinarian services as a, uh, accessory use in this, in this district. I did too inspect the property right before we came here tonight. And, um, it's situated, uh, if you're standing on the street, looking at the existing building to the right, we do have a neighbor. Mr. McCollum has spoken with those folks, and they are anxious to see a use of that property, and that, uh, they would welcome a veterinarian practice. Across the street is a mini mart. Catty corner to us is the Royal Farms. Across the street on Junietta is, uh, a dentist office, and then catty corner in the other direction, I, I can't remember. So we're surrounded by commercial, except for one residence, who we took the liberty of speaking to and had, in concept, in theory, no, no problems with that use. Mr. and Mrs. McCollum run a existing facility in Jarrettsville. And it's, it's well done. They do have boarding kennels there. This site would not be appropriate use for boarding, but it would be self-contained veterinarian services if we can get relief in the text amendment, followed by, obviously, the unnecessary approvals from the city, whatever form they may take, planning commission, Board of Appeals, mayor and city council, and so forth. So that's a quick summary, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, and that's the genesis for being here tonight. And I'd like to thank Tim for accommodating, accommodating, accommodating us quickly to get us on the agenda, so we can bring that to your attention.
Thank you. I'm sorry you had to wait so late, but, um.
Mr. McCollum is too, because I get paid by the hour.
I know. The only concern I have about a veterinary operation anywhere is, um, outside kennels and barking dogs. Uh, is this gonna be a strictly an inside operation, or is it gonna be outside kennels?
Strictly inside. Strictly inside, no kennels, no kennels.
Then you wouldn't even know it's there.
Correct, except for the sign.
Uh-huh. And since it's a bank, it's got a nice drive-through window, so you can just drive up and drop your dog, right?
I'd like to see that.
Right through the little. I think that's pretty cool. Okay, I will have the commissioners ask any questions of you. They might have.
I think that was the one concern that came to my mind too, that this would be self-contained inside, and what we might wanna do to, uh, further define the, uh, the use that it'd be fully enclosed.
And if this text amendment goes through as a conditional use, the Board of Appeals would tack that on as a condition of the approval for the conditional use, that no outdoor kennels would be allowed.
Do we have a definition for animal and vet?
I'm not sure. I would, I would need to go back and, and look. I'm not.
Well, we'd probably need to add that as well.
Yeah, probably.
In addition to just listing it.
Yeah.
I think, I think self-contained is, is a must in the definition.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've written, written those down. I'll put those, I'll make those changes in the recommendation.
Yeah. And other than that, I can't imagine any negative impact on, on the RB community.
I, I just have a question for Tim. Is there any other clinic that they, that already has been approved in Havertyrace that they can model after?
Hmm.
Or is it, is it, is it going to be the first one ever?
I can't think of one. There's one nearby in Swan Harbor, but that's officially in the county.
Okay, so, so what you're doing is one of, one of a kind, right? Something?
First time in Havertyrace.
As far as I know, Commissioner, that is correct.
Okay, cool.
And it's Tim indicated correctly, because I do represent those folks there in Hurford County jurisdiction, Swan Creek, yes.
Now, again, you're asking us.